With liberty and justice for all.
All right, this time I'll ask for roll call.
Sheriff Frazier?
Here.
Board Member King?
Here.
Board Member Florence?
Here.
Board Member Fleming?
Here.
Board Member Coon?
Here.
Town Attorney?
Here.
Town Clerk? Here.
Item number one's addition, deletions, and changes of approval of agenda.
This is for the planning and zoning meeting.
Yep, this is for the planning and zoning meeting, so we'll open up with that. So there's none, okay. So I just give a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Make it. Is it all in favor of approving the agenda? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Item number two is approval of minutes. Approval of minutes from August 21st. I'll read over them, so everybody just make a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from August 21st.
Second.
All in favor of approving minutes from August 21st, 2023, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Item number three would be public participation.
None.
None this time? Okay, there's no public participation, so we will close that. Item number four is new business request approval for resolution LDC 2023-02, a resolution recommending approval of a text amendment to the Land Development Code regarding section 60302.1 parking schedule.
This is an amendment to the text of the Land Development Code, adjusting the parking requirements for different types of businesses. This came to light as a result of the Dollar General marketplace that's scheduled to be becoming too full at White, and there was a requirement in our Land Development Code that would have required them to provide 80 spaces. Our planner, Mr. Volgirret, went through the parking requirements and adjusted them. You'll see the portion of changes stripped in and the dark is the additions. The reason for it is because the parking requirements were not in keeping with the times, if you will, and 80 spaces for a Dollar General was exorbitant when you consider that the majority of it is storage. So he went in and adjusted the parking schedule to be more in line with the type of businesses that are being built now in the areas. So it quickly parking spaces for the Dollar General down from 80 to 40. And this was done because the Dollar General people had asked for a variance, and when you do a variance, it's best to go ahead and do the change, the text amendment to the Land Development Code, so it's in perpetuity and can go forward for everyone.
So you're not doing a variance for every single?
No.
For every single business?
That's why we did this, so that everything would be covered and we wouldn't have each business coming in asking for a variance over and over and over again. So that's why he felt it was easier to go in and adjust his parking schedule in lieu of doing a variance. So...
I saw that he changed a lot more than just specific to the Dollar General, though.
Yes, he did. He went through all of the businesses and adjusted them to be in keeping with what he felt were accurate and correct parking requirements. Remember, our Land Development Code was put into effect in 2013. So he went in and amended it based on his expertise.
He went in here and talked about golf courses?
Yes.
Car washes?
He said as long as he was amending it, he was going to do it all.
Guess we're getting a golf course.
That would be nice, but it would...
Very nice. Sure.
The 40 spots for a Dollar Marketplace, that don't seem like that many. Especially as little as the spots are these days.
Well, he went and based it on the square footage of the retail area for the store. And that's how it was determined.
So you look at the Dollar General in Brantford, it clearly has more than 40 spaces, but I'm told, and I think I understand that our store is going to be significantly smaller than theirs.
Like I said, he based it on the actual square footage of the store and their requirements.
Does anybody have any paperwork? There's a marketplace out there that's got 40 spots? And not 60 to 80?
I know the one we have here, which I know is not, is going to be the same, but the one we got here, I would, I mean, I never really counted one, but I mean...
It's probably 30 at least.
There are 20 or 30.
And it's just a little bit of an hour store.
Sure. This is a representative for the Dollar General. If she would like to speak.
Yeah, please, please.
Provide some additional information for you. What's your name? Holly Iris.
So for Dollar Generals now, it's not uncommon for us to go pursue parking variances these days. Some municipalities have less code. It could be anywhere from, we've been, the city of Williston requires 35 spaces for a store, and Leaning County requires 105. So there's a lot of variation throughout the municipalities, even just between towns and counties. The $12,000 dollar A square foot store, which is the best for Fort White, that's kind of one of the newer prototypes. There's not a lot built in the area. There is one under construction right now in Swan County, State Route 51 and County Road 252. We did receive a parking variance for that to reduce to 40 spaces as well. We do have parking studies, I don't have it on me right now, but we have parking studies for kind of all over the state of Florida, both rural areas and more urban areas. And even in the, no matter where you are, there's never been more than 21 cars in a parking lot at one time. So that's kind of counting the peak hours and counting the number of cars there. So there is some good data to back that up. Average state time in a store is about 23 minutes. So there's a lot of traffic in and out, but not a lot of people there hanging around for the same time.
Well, I mean, if they feel like it's enough, I don't see why we, I mean, very young, everyone's making the money. If I was a business, I would want more parking spaces if I felt like there was going to be more people there.
Don't forget the town we live in. That parking lot fills up, you're going to have trucks in the damn retention ponds and side by sides up and down 27.
There's going to be a bunch of traffic.
Nat, are you familiar with the one in Brantford?
I'm not.
Do not, okay.
I think if it's a larger market store, it's probably about 20,000 square feet. I'm from Bronson, and we had a market store there, and it's the larger 20,000 square foot prototype. They don't do those anymore. That's a little bit outdated. So their 12,480 square foot is now what they call a market store.
Gotcha.
And 40 spaces is their preferred spaces. Based on the studies that we've completed, they never even reached that.
Do you know how big the one here is? The one that's here now?
That one's probably 9,400, maybe 7,500.
This one's going to be slightly bigger than the Dollar General we have.
Yeah, so, and they're, you know, they're interested more to be able to put in more produce and that sort of thing than their older prototype. So a lot of that extra storage is for cooler space for produce and more produce use and that sort of thing.
Any more questions for? Nat, thank you.
I mean, I don't see no problem with it really. They did their traffic study and, I mean, and they were...
Did we ever? Anybody seen the traffic study?
I haven't, so...
Have you?
We have it.
And y'all provided, y'all provided, I guess?
It was provided to Mr. Garrett.
Okay, okay. Is he, is he, he's saying that he's good with it?
Yeah, he's the one who came up with all of these numbers and everything. So, yeah, he went through the traffic study, et cetera.
I guess you know who the holler actually goes back to. Yeah? All right, well, I mean... Might need to have a motion on the table? Anything you're good with, not good with?
I believe there's a site layout.
I've seen a drawing here, which I've been looking at in the back.
If you have this one.
Looks like there's plenty of runoff parking too, but for some reason it did get full. Could they add the parking on this if they needed to? Could they add the parking?
Let's say they got more room to add the parking if they needed to. I mean, if it ever...
You would not be able to get to the total 80 spaces.
Understood, but...
But could you, if you needed to add 25 more, I mean, if it grew to that capacity, we had people parking all up down the road or whatever the capacity, you know, I mean...
Sure, and I can't speak to an exact number for sure, but more could you add if you're on an 80 seat?
Am I looking at two handicap spots?
Yes, and that's, it's one for 25 spaces and two for 50 spaces.
Can I use it?
There, because that's the grain fill. Seeing what these other ones do before I'm... My department ties us to what the system's going for.
To the point, just like these stores here?
Yeah, compared that to what's in Brantford, to what's going here.
Yeah, she said probably around 20,000 square foot. That's one of the bigger ones, you're saying that they don't really do that more. It's kind of outdated now, so they're going back to the small. Which, it's only, if you want...
Y'all have one of these signs built with 40 spots?
We do, yes.
Where's it located?
Almost done right now. There's one in Swan County at State Route 51 and County Road 252, intersection.
That's the only one y'all got built right now, is that one?
There's some more in the surrounding area. A lot of them are kind of under permitting and construction at this moment. We just got one approved in Gilchrist County. And there's, you know, some in Marion County, a little bit further away.
That one in Swan County, I'm sorry. One in Swan County is a pretty rural area, right?
Yes, sir.
For your talking, though?
Yes, sir. I don't have a hard copy of the parking study. I am looking at the data. The one in, there's one in Cross City that's 12,480 square feet. On December 27th, they did a count on that, and the maximum parking was there. There were only 12 cars there maximum. And in White Springs, they had one, say, 12,480 square feet, and there were 22 spaces maximum taken on December 22nd.
That's on one day?
Yes, sir.
It's part of the 40, the motorcycle parking I see here? That's in that count, so it's...
My motorcycle would be in addition to that if it were required.
I'm looking at the drawing here, and I don't see 40 spots on one. I don't know if this still has to be revised or what, unless this, what I believe to be motorcycle parking is part of it.
Start on the dark page, I'm looking at the light page. I thought I could see on the light page.
There's only 40 parking spaces and five motors.
Yeah, there's 40 there.
Is there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm just counting, not counting them five motorcycle spots.
I'm glad y'all can see all this. I can't, I'm glad y'all can see all, I can see it all. I'm a man, I'm a magnified guy.
We're going to start blowing these things up, maybe put them on a square heater or something. You got 32, but it's way since 2014.
Yeah, I mean, I see, yeah. I do see motorcycle spots.
I got glasses on to see that. They're pretty thick.
I mean...
How many people a day, did they do a full study of a full hour day? How many people goes in the one?
They do. I don't have any of the data offhand. It varies per store. I would have to, I would have to ask for some data for specific stores in this area.
I know the one we have now. I mean, and...
You stand in line down there more than 20 minutes.
Yeah, yeah. What I'm saying is, you never pull in there at all the parking places, even the one, I don't know how many parking places down there, but it ain't 40.
Well, it doesn't have the access as this one though either. That one turn in, left, right, straight.
Right.
It's going to be more gracious too, you're going to have more people driving.
Yeah, but I just, I don't, I don't think, I mean, you'd think that...
I mean, it might be good, I'm just asking.
Yeah, I just think that, I know if I was going to do a business, I would try to make, do my studies, make sure it's ample amount, because it's going to cost thin if it ain't realistically.
What you're talking about is the smaller than yet, is when you go to park in them big truck, a lot of them pulling their sideways, they got two spots.
Two spots, yeah, they do.
A bunch of that goes on because the trucks are so good.
Set up the same night, yeah. It's like they're going to back down to the loading dock. Am I looking at that wrong?
I can't even see it, so I mean...
Put some bigger glasses on.
Definitely have to back down.
Get my prescription checked. No, I'm looking at too much. All right, save your...
I imagine this is going to be part of the road, so I may put in and then back in.
The truck pulls in front of the store and then backs into it.
Right. No, they're going to back right down that, back out right there. Yeah.
I bet they got it figured out. I bet they had it figured out.
They got it figured out.
Well, this is going to be a little round here, it'll be tough.
Right, it's not part of that property, not part of that.
When we first started this prototype, the 12,480, we were going, we were asking for 50 spaces, and that this past year has been reduced to 40 from Dollar General themselves had just noticed that it was excessive.
From the study they did, I guess?
Probably did at all.
It seems like it wouldn't come down, let's go do 10 more. I mean, if you already got the payment company to do 10 more spots, I mean, you would think it wouldn't be when the building's made.
This one down here, this one down here has 40.
It's got 40.
Yeah, there's over 20 out front. Think about it.
It's at least 10 and 10.
Another five on the other side of the door, and it got to be more on this side of the door, and then it's the same amount across toward the highway from it. That's got to be 20, knock out the size. I was reading all of this.
I know that.
I mean, this building's fairly going to be bigger than that building too. Only another 3,000 square foot or so bigger.
That's what I'm thinking.
Relatively, relative to size.
That's what I'm thinking.
I wish I could design it a lot better, though.
I would hope so.
As well, because that one's a nightmare down there, but...
All right, any more discussion? Good? All right, so do we have a motion on the board? Or we make a motion? And that's at long time. No motion? I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion, resolution recommending approval of the text amendments for Land Development Code regarding section 6.03.02.1 parking schedule.
Second.
All right, we got a second. Any more discussion? All right, so all in favor of approving resolution LDC 2023-02, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? Okay. At this time, we will adjourn the planning and zoning meeting, and we will go right into the town council meeting. Oh, I didn't need a motion. I didn't need a motion.
Motion to adjourn planning and zoning meeting.
Do all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay?
Aye.
This time we'll open up the planning and zoning meeting. Oh, I mean, I mean the regular meeting, the regular town council meeting. We already went through, you get back to roll call, Miss Conner, or no? Everybody's still here, so anybody left, anybody got mad left? All right, item number one will be additions, deletions, changes, and approval of agenda.
Yes.
We do, I knew we did.
We do, yes, kind of. Okay. Item number seven. Interlocal agreement with Columbia County regarding storm assistance.
Agreement.
Interlocal agreement with Columbia County for storm assistance. Number eight. Right-of-way parking will be resolution R2023-047.
Read that again?
These are the right-of-way parking. And number nine. Is the catalogs medium for the water plant.
Please do. Guys, we're making a motion to approve this, just say make a motion with the changes. You didn't say the changes, so we don't have to read all that out. Is that all of them?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I just need a motion to approve agenda with changes.
I need a motion to approve agenda with changes.
Good, just a second. All in favor of approving the agenda with changes, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? All right, good deal. All right, item number two is meeting minutes, approval of minutes from August 21st, 2023. Motion to approve those?
I'll make a motion to approve meeting minutes from August 21st, 2023.
Good. All in favor of approving August 21st, 2023, minute, minute, meeting, meeting minutes, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? All right, at this time, we will open up public participation.
I have one.
Have one, okay. All right, so if that one would...
Cindy Patterson?
Please come up.
Would like to address number 48, right-of-way parking.
Okay, good deal. Come on, hold on. Yeah, good talking.
Hey, guys.
Hello.
I received a letter, or, you know, for White Community Frish Shop, received a letter on right-of-way parking. My issue on the right-of-way parking is I don't think anybody in this town has any parking, any business, other than the Dollar General and the Family Dollar. Where we are located, there's no parking. We had discussed on taking out our fencing, but there's an old certificate there. So we were, the letter that we received stated that our customers were going to get towed. Now, I understand that the private property at Cross where we are at, we have already stopped everybody from going there because he's got a, you know, a lawn there. But now they have started to park up front doors. We've always had that parking and along the side of the building. That's all the parking we have. Now, with the lines, the right-of-way, everybody is out on the right-of-way. My issue is that if that is taken out, we have no parking. I know that we are building somewhere else, but that's, you know, a year down the line. So we're going to have an issue for a whole year, and I know that a lot of these business owners are going to have that issue of right-of-way parking. I think everybody, all the businesses, other than the Family Dollar and the Dollar General, has right-of-way parking. So, I mean, if we can come together and then, you know, figure out something other than saying, no, we're going to tow you, you know, tow your customers, which, you know, is not a viable situation here. All right, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, thank you for your time, yes, ma'am.
Number one on the agenda is Mr. Sanders. As you like to call him, Mr. Sanders is our grant person that we employed to get our FURDA grants, and he wants to give us an update on the train depot and perhaps forming CRA area.
Yeah, you do.
And he is going to use our little new train.
And thank you for the opportunity, and thank you for the new facilities, bullet cups and handy. Before I begin my presentation, the state extended the grants for the parks to the 15th of September. That gave Connie and Andy, my senior partner, more time to work out the deed for your park out here, because you've got 30 some acres, but only 10 or 20 or whatever size would be used for the parks. So there was some confusion on the part of what the state would think. Are you actually doing a 3-acre park, or are you doing a 6-acre park?
He's referring to John O'Brien, there, down that closest neighborhood.
So what I wanted to do, first of all, is bring up my PowerPoint on depots, which is one of my favorite topics. I'm from Pascal Kelly, where I did participate getting their depot on the National Register. And I see similar similarities between the depots. They act as a gateway for development when pioneers came to Fort White and when pioneers came to Dade City. The depot was a way to exchange goods and bring in services. When we were analyzing the depot in Dade City, we found out in the early 1900s, this gentleman stayed in Dade City for about six hours while they were working on the steam boiler. And so it was amazing that we found out that March 20th came to Dade City. And I say that to show everybody how powerful depots are, and you have one right out here, that when I was out there this afternoon, people, many cars come by, and it's going to be a wonderful attraction to your community when it gets going. Our depot in Dade City was a member of the Atlantic Coastline, just like your depot. 50 years ago, it looked like this. It was built in 1912, the year the Titanic sank, but it became a coastline depot, and it's been there many, many years. When I was a planner, we asked for $250,000 to begin the depot process. By the time the state and the federal government came on board, they were able to help us raise the budget to $800,000. And at the same time, we were being remodeled by Zephyr Hills. And your depot and the depot in Dade City have a lot of similar areas. For example, in Dade City, there was questions, what would we do with the depot once it's remodeled? And I'm going to show you how that turned out. These are pictures of the depot in Dade City once it was being built. And one of the hardships of this depot, it was on an active line. So trying to work with the railroad, that was tough. We won't have to worry about it.
Yeah.
But the depot came a long way, you can see the construction going away. This is what it looks like today. It's on the US 98 bypass of Dade City. And we also put it on the National Register. And that's why I felt comfortable when we asked you to bring us on board, because I checked the criteria, they haven't changed it one bit. Still the same forms from 1995 to the year 2023. Dade City has worked with an individual who set up a heritage museum in the Dade City depot, so people can come to the depot sometimes during the day. And it's very convenient, the park is near, and they see artifacts that we have found in Dade City. And, you know, your depot's big enough to do that as well, once you get it restored. We have a lot of memorabilia... We have a lot of memorabilia in our depot. We have fashions, we have train models, we called them railway stations, and we had one, just one, on Friday. People come out the depot with their cameras and wait for CSS to bring the train in. And the kids and everybody are there, and some of these participants brought in drones, and we can see the train coming forty miles away, so it's amazing. But the Dade City depot was a part of the ninety-four ninety on the National Register. Another depot I worked with on is in San Antonio. There was an Orange Belt railroad that went from St. Petersburg to Plowwater. It's hard to believe, in nineteen seventy-six, that's what that depot looked like. By the time I was asked to work on it, it fell into a little disuse, the topic of, and the subject of vandalism. But we were able to work with the state, the state, the same historic funding source that we're talking about for you. We turned this depot around, we worked on the caboose as well. And today, the caboose and the depot in San Antonio are still standing. I found a historic picture on Florida State Library of your depot, and our application will show these pictures as your depot looks now. And it's, it's, there are the arsome areas of repair. After all, that's why we're, we're looking at it to stop the repairs that are, oh, the damage that needs to be repaired. And mostly, it's, uh, exterior and foundation problems that you can see. Well, this, what you call Mayor's Park's so wonderful, you have the depot and you have the caboose right on a major thoroughfare. And I don't know how many people come in, but when they're coming in to see a Tucky Springs or whatever, they have to pass this. So, Mayor's Park is very prominent, and some people, I think, will really show up when we do our application. We, we have done a preliminary questionnaire, which the mayor has signed, but I'm gonna have the mayor sign a new one. That's actually able to get more information since that time. There's no timeframe. These applications are submitted to the state year-round. But there's been plenty of activity. You've been trying for a number of years to get the depot to where you want it now. I was out there this afternoon, it is in extreme bad shape. I mean, you can press against the walls like cardboard. So, the, the caboose, there was only sixty-five or seventy of these caboos as made. And I found out that a local educator, a principal, got the, the caboose donated Columbia County first. Then it ended up coming over here when there was some kind of school consolidation. So, you had the caboose, it's, it's fighting the losing battle right now. But what I plan to do is get your depot on the National Register. Then, in the spring, when we start the grant process with the State, State of the Story Division, you'll have the depot on the National Register, that will give us a tremendous foot-up. Now, the other process I wanted to show you here, and this is really nice to be able to do this, Connie asked me to look at a provision called Community Redevelopment Area. And what that is, the state of Florida has made it possible for cities to set up an area in the city that becomes a outlined community development area. Once you establish it, that's the base year. From that point on, if it's established this year, then in two thousand twenty-four, if there's any increase in real estate value, you get that, not the county, it comes to you. You decide how many blocks in the downtown area would be included. Now, there are exclusions, Swanee River property, it's owned by the Water Mansion District, schoolwork property, uh, any public property like that. And the way it works, I would have to develop and report. I will come up here and I'll drive every street in Fort White, thank God it's not Gainesville. I could do Fort White. We will look for slum and blight conditions, substandard structures that are already identified by the state. We did this for the town of Center Hill in Sunker County. And I'll just briefly go up and show you the kind of that is what we're looking for. We found a tree in the middle of this road, that definitely was a problem. We found a lot of exterior examples. These are the kind of properties that would be held if you had an area in the city generating this kind of income. Any storm damage, we would look at that. But basically, the first thing I would do is come back to you in probably three months with a, what they call a findings of necessity report. It will tell you the slum and blight conditions in your town, and then will compare the earned income in this town against the state averages, and put that all together. So, the second thing would be your boundaries. You have to decide how many blocks in the downtown area would be included in this. Once that's decided, we have public hearings. We need to adopt a resolution and adopts the finding of necessity report. We need to adopt an ordinance that sets up the boundaries and the legals for the community redevelopment area. You need a CRA plan. What do you plan to do with this income that's being generated? And it has to be consistent with your comprehensive plan. And then there's tax increment financing, which I'll get to in just a minute. But the money that's raised by the CRA will pay for any title search, any administrative overhead expenses that are devoted to finding out the history of this property and what can be done with it, any plannings, surveys, financial analysis reports, if you want to purchase property, if you want to clear a property, if you want to purchase bonds, anticipation notes, or that kind of thing. It gives you a lot of leverage because this money is coming to you directly. After the public hearings, there are notifications. We will send certified letters to the Columbia County Administrator, the Columbia County Property Praiser, and the Columbia County Tax Collector. And under state law, they will abide by the boundaries that you have set up. And if there's any increase, now, there's no guarantee. When, when, when there was the pandemic, these CRAs in the state of Florida suffered. I think we're past that point now. So, you know your town better than me, anticipate, well, how much money would be made in the downtown area? And once we make these notifications, the next thing we do is what's called tax increment financing. That is based on the taxable value of the property within the boundaries. And like I said earlier, if two thousand twenty-three becomes the base year, then in two thousand twenty-four, if there's any increase in there, you will have a special account set up, and Connie will see the money that comes in from Columbia County because the Property Praiser and the Tax Collector are aware of where that increased money would go. And like I said, the Swanee River Water Mansion District will be exempt, any schoolwork property, any state, county, or town or church property will exempt. Now, this is a very brief summary, but I have all the documents ready. If you wish for handy lines of pursuit on this, we ask a fifteen-hundred-dollar one-time payment. Connie will get all the public notices, all the resolutions, all the ordinances. Within a matter of weeks, we would be set up and potentially have two thousand twenty-four as your base year. There's several hundred CRAs in the state of Florida. I mentioned Gainesville, Gainesville has several CRAs within the city. You can have more than one, but I think from a practical standpoint, one would be sufficient here. And you decide that, what properties would be included. And I know I talked to Travis earlier, he was wanting to know how he can improve his property. If he's in the CRA, he can come in and do a low-interest loan with this. It's a valuable tool. Uh, you were talking about parking earlier, maybe in the downtown area, parking could be made available by buying additional property. It gives you a lot of flexibility. And that, that is a very quick summary, but it'd be, I'd like to answer any questions. Have any of you ever heard of this before?
No.
If you look at the ballot, the, the redevelopment area we've done there in Dade City, we had a CRA, and they do landscaping and mediums and brick, it's a really nice feature that they have for the town. Like I said, it's an additional source of income revenue that's not available now, but it could be within the year.
Free money.
So, for us to make improvements to the downtown area. Um, the, uh, previous county manager, Dale Williams, from Columbia County, has been, uh, advising us for about a year and a half now to look into this and, uh, where it could be an additional revenue source for the town. Yeah, we can do things like, I don't know if you've been downtown Lake City, but we would not be that quaint because we have a major thoroughfare going through our downtown. But you can do lots of different things. You can do, have a different street lighting put up, you can do parking, you can do revitalization of abandoned buildings, you can do all sorts of things, like you said, landscaping.
You can do street lighting and that kind of thing. Beautification projects, they come, that would come in nicely as we bring in Mayor's Park. If you can imagine, a year from now, Mayor's Park being positioned as an estate historic site, and your downtown has new lighting, greenscape, and that kind of thing, which is not available now, but could be a available source for you in the future. Like I said, there's no guarantee, but it seems to me, every time I drive through Florida, there's a lot of construction going on.
And that comes from the state, the state of Florida?
No, it comes from your own pocket. When, when you establish the area, you pick out eight blocks, whatever, the next year, whatever that increase was from this year, that's your money. It comes from your home.
Property taxes.
Yes. It's, you're not involved with the state. Only to the state that you organize it, have the finding of necessity, and prove that you're, you are a slum and blighted area. Once that's done, uh, state statute is behind you for your legal purposes to draw that income and make improvement for the town.
It's a way for the town to capitalize on some of the property taxes that the county collects and return it to the town for use within the town, instead of using Lake City as a count.
It's not a grant, it's not a loan. It'll be an additional, uh, account in your general summary reports, whatever. It'll be something that you can look at a year from now and see what kind of...
So, whatever property taxes we paid in twenty twenty-three or your base year, twenty twenty-four, that's how much the county gets forever?
The county doesn't get anything, that's, that's...
Well, they get their, they don't get the, I thought you said we get the difference.
They, they get what is set up in two thousand twenty-three.
Right.
But any additional from the year on, you get it.
The difference, we get the difference of it. So, they're kind of locked into that money.
Right.
And that's what they get for forever. They don't get any increase at all, we get all the increase.
Right.
Understood.
And we will work with Connie, uh, once, if you approve this and we get started and get everything adopted, we'll work with her for our formal regulations that we... But if this was a big city like Gainesville, it'd probably be a great undertaking, considering how smaller the state is here. But you don't have to worry about multiple CRAs, you just have one, and maybe you'll, you'll dedicate ten blocks or eight blocks, whatever you decide. And you will hold public hearings, the public will be able to come here, and they'll know their property's being listed in this area.
So, we only get the extra, the, for what the property value is right now, and we get the extra. But let me ask you a question, we're, we're at an all-time high right now, I don't see property going to the high rung.
Well, like I said, if you just, you, you just, I won't say rolling the dice, but it is an investment in the future. Basically, the fifteen-hundred you pay us, that's it. Then, if anything happens next year, you get that money. And you may think you're at a high, but what happens in one year's time? When you get your wish watch facility going full blast, I predict that Fort White would be very attractive and developing.
You've got a public comment on this prepared, Paul?
Hmm, you can't, I guess, I mean, but it's gonna be very, I mean, yeah, I'm, yeah, yeah. Are you, are you, are you fin, are you summing, summed up, okay, so, yes, sir. Do I have any questions for him before he steps down, or anybody else?
No, no.
I would love to see more information, but it don't sound like a lot to me, just probably. Can you go down there, yeah, it might be. I'm not getting any of them, so, it might be.
Yeah, go ahead, your master.
Yeah, thank you. You see these all across America, go into any community, look through the brick sidewalks, and there's soon to be a CRA in that area. You will up with the whole area, but a lot of the entities doing that are CRAs that have gone forever is they take the money and they never fix the blight. You look at downtown Lake City, some of the blight is fixed, and some of the blight is not. And that's incumbent on this board because the idea is you get the money and, and supposed to be paid a blight sometime. But it really is an excellent idea, and there's nothing for the city to lose by approving this, there's only something to gain, and the fee is like, that's, that's weak, so, I would recommend that this board approve that.
What can you use the money for?
Permit me to say.
What can you use the money for, the city, the money, the money we collect?
Well, you could buy a property, you could restore, like that house right there, that was in your CRA, you could build that property, you could restore the property. You can offer low-interest loans, you can bring in traffic reports or any planning or surveying that's necessary as you develop your town as the years go by, that's all paid. If there's any storm damage or any kind of things that could have happened when the hurricane, I guess the hurricane missed you guys, right? I was in the hole.
Yeah.
So, if there's any storm damage, and see, one of the advantages is you have the money to do these things. You don't have to worry about applying for a grant or working with FEMA, you have the money right now. Now, it will start out slower, like you mentioned, maybe nothing happens next year. But five years from now, how can you predict how the town's future will be? Has, has the town changed? When you look back at your town five years ago, are you all in a better position now? Would you say you're in a better position? Yes, no?
My dear boy.
Sir, you've started out with the, the train depot, isn't that what you were proposing that those funds go to, is the train depot though?
Well, and first of all, we've already started the process to do a state historic grant for that. If the town council approves the CRA, that's gonna afford you your money to help the merchants in the downtown area. Your depot in Mayor's Park can stand on its own. I was out there this afternoon, uh, Connie gave me a set of keys, I was trying to get in, and people were honking and yelling at me for they thought I was breaking in the depot. So, I know firsthand experience, that depot was really a visible point in the town.
Right.
So, when that depot's repainted and you decide what to do with, with the caboose, it can stand on its own, but the CRA is basically for the purchases and businesses in that area that you designate.
So, no CRA money would go to the depot?
No, and we go to, only to that area and the CRA.
What the CRA is?
Community redevelopment agency.
What's the maximum amount of blocks that you can, um, use the CRA for? You say eight blocks, ten blocks?
No. There's no, there's no limit, but from our practical standpoint, you alone can do all the town. You probably would do the downtown area where there is commercial development because commercial development will generate more money for the residential. But you're not limited by the size, and you could set up two if you want to. But I think, looking at Fort White, I think one CRA in the downtown area would suffice.
Right. Actually, you'd use like Gainesville, so, yes, sir.
Is there any restrictions to the property owners if they are classified as CRA?
I have a question.
No. It's not a historical destination. It's not a historical designation. It's not a zoning designation. It's a financial district setup that benefits the town for any increment from the base year home. So your own zoning and your own code enforcement and your own comprehensive plan will dictate what happens in that downtown area. The difference is now you've got money to do something about it, whether it's more parking from whatever.
I think if you designate a CRA area, whatever block that is, if any of you have businesses or property on it, I think it should take you off the boat for discussions.
I think with profit, the increase in taxes, if they are given money to revitalize their buildings, they will profit. And I think that that's a complete difference and it should be taken off the boat. I don't know, Andy, I'm here, so I don't know anybody.
Well, that's how it works anyway. We can't vote.
Yeah, we're way, way, way. Yeah, we're a long way from that.
We gotta have this funding, a settlement first. What is the death of slumming life in your town? We'll find that first, then we go on from there. It is, it's a complicated procedure.
Right.
And not every town wants to go into it, but since I've met you all in the spring, I've become more familiar with the town. I see potential.
Once I get to her, I think you're gonna see the growth in the profit.
Yeah, can everybody turn their telephones off, please?
I don't think you can go wrong with this.
I don't either. I feel, well, I know Dale, I know Mr. Dale, as Ms. Connie says, been talking about this for years. And so now we've got somebody to set it up, I think it's, I think it's.
Well, remember, it's a one-time $1,500 fee. It wouldn't take much to get $1,500 back.
And if I hadn't already done it, I wouldn't bring this up. I'm more familiar with depots. I like history, but I worked with Andy and we worked in Southern County. We have Center Hill, we have Coleman, little towns that don't even have a commercial district. Center Hill and Coleman had no wastewater, no plans for wastewater. And one of these cities, EPA is gonna get an unwelcome visitation, that they are EPA violations with Kucha River, which is what happens if you continue to have a community and there's no wastewater collection. Sooner or later, the state's gonna cut that along.
Right. And you're looking for grants for historical.
Yeah, as I explained earlier, my idea was to get on the national register, which is a crowning the chief. And this depot clearly, with the information Connie gave me, it helped revitalize this town from a ruckus drinking town on Saturday night to where you are today. It clearly brought in development. And if I'm not mistaken, that rail line that you have out there, was that the original rail line that went through the town?
I can't answer that. I don't know for, yeah, I don't know for sure.
Well, what we're gonna look at is the authenticity of the caboose. And your depot was built in 1900.
I know the depot is the original.
Yeah, so we're gonna look at that.
I don't know about the railroad or the caboose.
The railroad was behind it.
Yeah. I mean, see, I don't know if that rail line was, yeah, it was. So they probably brought the rail line in from somewhere. So it probably wasn't, it probably wasn't original, so no. I think the rail line was, I think the rail line's where the dirt was down.
The rail line was probably down there.
All right, so, all right, so, let's wrap this up as we move on. Are y'all, we need, y'all have a motion? I mean, it's, I mean, it's, I don't think the town's gonna suffer any bad out of it for sure, so it seems like a good idea, so.
Lindsay, you have an opinion on this?
Absolutely. It's free, it's free money, basically. A lot of your discussions over the past several months have been about having more autonomy here within the town. It's a way to get autonomy within the town from your tax dollars, put your tax dollars back into work in your town where we're gonna be taking out of it. I'm half joking to say, I hate to agree with Mr. Leford about anything. I agree that the need to do what they're going to do is way more than reasonable and it's a no lose thing. Look, if you don't get, if we go through it and there's not big raises in taxes over the years, we don't get a lot of money, okay, we've lost $1,500 by making a change. If taxes go up, if we get money, then we have essentially free money that we have the authority to do it with. I think it's a great idea, a good idea.
All right, so do we have a motion on the board?
I guess to approve the CRA. To, I guess, the train depot and the CRA, so.
Make a motion to approve the train depot and CRA program.
Second? Second? All right, so all in favor of approving the train depot and the CRA program, say aye? All opposed, say nay? All right, good deal. All right, there you go, Mr. Sanders. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time.
Excuse myself.
Yes, I understand. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Otherwise, I don't like municipal meetings, but I'll keep myself up.
Yeah, that's okay. All right, number, number two, Ms. Connie would be.
Want to step up there?
No.
No, no. Cemetery issues.
This cemetery has lots of issues. We keep taping it, we keep taping it. Something's gotta be done because the paperwork that Ms. Connie gave me the other day to go look at the cemetery, I went around there. That might be a quarter of the cemetery. We have no plaques besides the north side of the cemetery. The first thing that's gotta be done, it's gotta be plated. Then I'm hoping to put a committee together, of course, a working committee that'll work and, I mean, just to get everybody's name. My mom and daddy's not even listed as being in that cemetery. Both aren't buried in that cemetery, but, I mean, I'm just to the point that I went around there and looked to see what the problems are. And we got, the starting with the cemetery's gotta be plated, just like we did this other cemetery around here. And I'm asking.
What'd you do around that?
Pardon?
What happened to the other cemetery?
It's not plated.
The old.
You talking about yours?
Let's stay on track, guys. Hold on to the soundtrack and we'll, lives are both coming to the cemetery. Hold on a second.
I'm asking for the cemetery to get plated. And then we'll, the committee will go in and go from there with it. How you gonna handle that, Bill? Same way we did the other one, we hired somebody to go in there and plot, plot the plots.
And then survey.
Yep. That's all I'm asking the city to do.
What's the name of that gentleman's name? Cause I used to use. I know him, I can't think of his name.
The new part of it's been done.
Yes.
The north part of it's, the north part of it's been done, but I'm talking about the very north part, which is maybe a quarter of that cemetery. There's no, there's no, we have nothing, I have nothing.
Mark Durn, Mark Durn's his name, that's right. How would he charge us for that? Do you remember that?
I wanna say $6,500.
Yeah, that's the problem we'll run into is that when we plot that, there's no way because, here's my problem. If we're going to plot it, spend $6,500 of town money, how are we getting that money back? Because all them plots were given to people.
Because there's probably a hundred.
Future plots.
There's probably a hundred, there's probably a hundred spots in that cemetery, that part of the cemetery, that's not, nobody's buried.
Right.
They weren't paid for.
So we're gonna charge them?
Yeah, just like everybody else. But there's over a hundred spots in those cemeteries that nobody's buried. And I'm saying a hundred, there's probably 150, but I'm trying to be real honest. In the old part. The new part's already been done, but the old part's got a lot more places for people to bury than you think when you go around and start looking. What's the plot go?
Depends on if you're a Fort White citizen. It ranges from 500 to 1,500.
If you're not a Fort White citizen, it's $1,500.
Regardless, you get a money.
Real majority of it, no matter what. Well, here's the thing, though, how many of those hundred plots have already been accounted for? That's, that's.
Even if it's accounted in the family, y'all are saying that, hey, they fixing to start paying, just like the southern cemetery you had to.
You got it right.
Yeah, but I'm saying, maybe there are held spot that they would have, they going.
That, that cemetery and what we're talking about right now was.
It's too different. I agree.
Because we're talking about where there's people coming forward right now that's saying, no, that's my plot that was given to me by so-and-so 40 years ago.
It is their spot, but it's not paid for yet.
Right. And I don't know how to handle that. That's the problem is you don't know how to, I don't know.
Well, that'd be a committee to come up with a resolution, but first we need to get those plots figured out and then go from there. If they got any kind of documentation that shows they had and paid for a spot, great. If not, I don't know. We'll figure it out.
Well, everything needs to go through, and I do approve the committee part. I do, there needs to be a committee for that cemetery.
They do.
Everything goes to the committee, the committee comes and presents.
But the first thing is, it's gotta be plotted, so they got something to go by.
That needs to be done.
I agree. I mean, so.
I can call Mr. Durn and get a quote.
And it might be, cause we did the whole, at Heavenly Rest Cemetery, didn't we do the whole cemetery?
Yes.
And I don't think this part is as big as that, right? I don't know, I don't recall.
It's probably more than one person. The newer part's done.
Yeah, but Mark's chief. He's chief. I checked around and everybody else wanted $40,000.
Oh, my.
See, and Mark was the cheapest bid we had come in, so, yeah.
Oh, yeah, wasn't he close?
Yeah. Remember, one was 30 and one was 60 and one was, oh, yeah, Mark, I couldn't even believe he came in. And I don't even know if it was 6,500, I thought it was less than that, Ms. Connie.
Well, maybe that or.
Maybe it was, maybe it was, I don't remember. Can you, can you give us prices so that we can put it on the next agenda and just say, yes, let's move forward?
I can give some quotes, Jim.
Okay, that'd be okay? Can we do that? Give prices and we'll move forward.
That's fine, I'm just wanting to move forward. Nobody's getting younger. And I would like to see, I would like to see this thing done before I die.
All right, so what happened? Any questions? Yeah. Oh, actually, you called, you called Mr. Jackson?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Mr. Jackson, who is it?
When, when, when we went up to the Heavenly Rest, everybody was told what the price was gonna be. Y'all gave us six months. And we had to contact family members and everybody who'd been told that this portion might belong to the Jacksons. But it didn't matter no more after those six months. And those six months, you gotta come in here and you got to buy a plot. And my suggestion, you gotta do the same thing over there, because I got some family members that, oh, they was gonna be buried by my mom. And they didn't have no plot by my mom, and they ain't gonna be buried by my mom. And the day they live in Miami, it cost them $1,500. So we said, these two cemeteries was gonna start being on the same wavelength. So we went all the way from $75 to $1,500 for the people that live with me. So both cemeteries got to be on the same wavelength.
I think we offered, didn't we offer like a six-month term for?
Six months, as a matter of fact, you went seven because you gave an extra month because something happened. And everybody now had to pay 500, 1,000, and 50.
For the seven months, so what was, what was the fee?
It was six months, but you gave me seven because something happened in the six months. And actually, you gave six months and a week. You gave us an extra.
What was that fee? You remember that fee that we was charging for?
We was paying $75.
Same time, right.
And then we went to 500, we went to 1,000 and 500. And we had buried some people that was supposed to be grandpa, he had, I was supposed to be buried by my grandmother, my dad was supposed to be here, 500, 1,000, so nobody had no plots, even though they were told they had.
Got you.
You could have been buried. All those cemeteries.
Yes, sir. I agree. I fully agree.
But the cemetery was plotted and sold lots before Heavenly Rest did. We were doing it for years before Heavenly Rest, but never was plotted until, I guess, recently.
Right, it wasn't plotted.
But the old cemetery, then it was plotted and lots were sold.
Right, but what I'm saying is, is, prices got to be the same because, because my uncle died, my uncle was told.
Hey, Mr. Jackson, let's keep our attention, okay? Please, let's get back to the meeting. Y'all, if y'all can talk afterwards, okay? Y'all need to, so, I know you don't. All right, let's go back to.
Give quotes and quotes for them.
Yes, please. All right, thank you, Ms. Jackson.
Next on the agenda is a request for approval of resolution number R2023-045. A resolution of the town council of the town of Fort White, Florida, adopting the legend for fiscal year 2324 and providing for an effective date. There is a revision made on the operations budget on line item number 36. There is a, according, and I'm thankful to our attorney for pointing this out, from the first reading, his contract calls for an 8% CPI increase and that has been added in here now. That was the only change.
No, you don't wipe the bottom line, I mean, what do you do? I mean, you got seven, make more sales, I mean, what do you do with it? You know, so.
What do we need here? Motion to approve it? Make a motion to approve the resolution R2023-045. Got seconds? All in favor of approving, oh, yeah, number four, three. Resolution 2023-045, second presentation of proposed budget, say aye? All opposed, say nay?
Next on the agenda is the second reading of ordinance number 202301, an ordinance of the town of Fort White, Florida, amending the town's land development code related to amending the town of Fort White official zoning outline on a certain property located within the town limits of the town of Fort White, Florida, from agriculture to general commercial, repealing all ordinances in conflict, providing for the severability and providing for an effective date. This is to change the zoning on the 2.3 acres for the dollar general market.
Okay, I like to do. Second reading.
Yep, this is the second reading, we approved the first one, so. Need a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance 2023-01, to change from agriculture to commercial.
Second. Got a second? All in favor of approving the second reading of ordinance 2023-01, say aye? All opposed, say nay?
Next on the agenda is the second reading of ordinance number 202302, an ordinance of the town of Fort White, Florida, providing for a small scale amendment to the future land use now of the town of Fort White comprehensive plan as amended from agriculture to commercial as amended pursuant to an application by concept development under the amendment procedures established in chapter 163, part two, Florida statutes as amended on certain lands within the corporate limits of the town of Fort White, Florida, providing severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict and providing an effective date. This again is to change the land used from agriculture to commercial on the same piece of property.
Another motion to approve the second reading of ordinance 2023-02. Second. All in favor of approving the second reading of ordinance 2023-02, say aye? All opposed, say nay? And number six.
An ordinance of the town of Fort White, Florida, amending the land development code. This is the first reading, I'm sorry. Ordinance number 2023003, an ordinance of the town of Fort White, Florida, amending the land development code of the town of Fort White, Florida, amending section 6.03.02 entitled rubber parking space and require to specifically amend the parking schedule providing for severability, providing for conflicts and providing for an effective date. This is the first reading of the ordinance, the plan of the zoning that you just previously recommended approval for. approval for.
All up.
Your second reading would be.
That's for the Dollar General, the parking spaces, yes.
We, we just approve it.
How many parking spaces? That's toward the forty-five, forty spaces for the, for the Dollar General.
Well, numbers, you do agree?
Six. Number six.
Twenty-two three and number six.
Six.
Two oh two three dash oh three.
My God, this is showing where it's everybody. It's not just the Dollar General.
That's correct. Yeah. Yes, we changed the land development code. Good. So, we have a motion. I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance two zero two three dash oh three, amending the land development code, section six dot oh three dot oh two dot one, parking schedule.
Second.
Good. All in favor of, uh, first reading of ordinance twenty-two three dash oh three, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
All right.
Next is an interlocal agreement between the Columbia County, the city of Lake City, and the town of Fort White, Florida. Uh, this is an agreement wherein we agree to participate as a joint group. You want to explain this? You're better.
This is for, for, uh, the county to get reimbursement for storm cleanup at this one or, or, you know, ones in the future, et cetera. Um, and their attorney sent it out to, uh, Lake City's attorney and me. We all looked at it and all talked about it and made some changes to it. I, I suggested there was some language in there that, that said that they could charge us out of pocket expenses. They would have to pocket expenses. Were. Um, so anyway, I said, well, let's, you know, take that out. But basically, this is just agreeing that if the county comes in and does work, uh, disaster work here, um, in the town limits, then they can get reimbursed for it. And we agreed to, to, you know, support that.
And what?
Don't, doesn't require us to.
And what kind of checks and balances do they have to go through to get that money?
I'm sorry?
Checks and balances. What kind of checks and balances does the county have to go through to get that money?
That would be between them and FEMA or the state.
Okay.
Now, this does not apply to any, um, storm work that we do ourselves within the town.
I was gonna say, that one ain't it was.
This is only for the county. If, if we ask the county to come in here and help us do any kind of storm rehab or anything like that, then they're just saying that we agreed that they can apply to get reimbursed from FEMA.
Does not want to affect our FEMA money?
No, would not.
Okay.
In fact, I had that discussion today with, uh, the emergency mental people because the representative from FEMA came by here today and introduced his replacement. And, um, I asked him about that. And we do have a lot of debris that we have collected, et cetera, throughout the town due to Adalia. And, um, we are putting the process in motion to get some reimbursement for that. Because we agreed that we were gonna collect all the storm debris throughout the town through the month of September for the citizens if it's placed out in the right of way.
I got a question about this. So, oh, Jesus, man. So, if, if, I suspect you'll approve this. You should approve it. Because if you ask the counties help now, the county, I spoke to FEMA last week. I think every tree in, in Dallas, it landed on my property. I mowed a McQueen tree for two weeks. And you ask the county for help. What I understand this agreement would do is if the county comes in, they have a separate consultant. Because years ago, they got nailed to like over a million dollars that they had to pay back. So, if you don't have an I dotted or a T crossed, FEMA will come after you. So, the county did a little forward thinking. And I, the consultant, number one, to fit, to do the paperwork. And number two, services out of Texas to pick up the organic material. So, I don't know if you called the county now and said, we want help. But this agreement would do would enable the county to get reimbursed. And they would come in and hold this big heavy equipment that they come in and pick that up.
That's correct.
And, uh, I think that would be a good idea. Now, the county, when I spoke to FEMA last week, the county's deadline to pick up in the right of way organic material was Sunday night to put it out. FEMA, the guys from FEMA are recommending the local guy to the headquarters in Lake City to increase the, the deadline. You said you're through the end of the month. I suspect that the county will probably be something like that. But that's something to keep your eye on if, if you're gonna ask the county to come in. Because they, when you ask the county to come in, they should pick up the stuff from the right of way.
Right.
So, I recommend.
You said that, yes, sir.
Absolutely.
Make a motion to approve. I have no problem with it. I mean, if, if, like I said, as long as it's not.
That's what I'm doing.
I mean.
Not confirmed.
Yeah.
No?
No.
We kept our own records. We kept our own loads. We kept everything that the town has done. We have photos, everything, just submitted to FEMA.
So, I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the interlocal storm assistance with Columbia County.
So, sir, all in favor of interlocal agreement with Columbia County for storm assistance, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
All right. We're good.
Okay. Next is resolution number R two oh two three dash oh four seven. This was not in your packet, but it was laid, it was put on the table. We don't have this account on. This is in response to, we've been, uh, let me back up and give a little ministry. We have been receiving complaints from citizens within the town of right of way parking. I don't know if people realize it or not, but we, we understand that there are parking shortages throughout the town. However, the town has a three hundred thousand dollar liability insurance policy, and that's it. And we, as you know, I indicated to you last meeting, I believe it was, the combination of our property coverage, our liability, our workers' comp, et cetera, is going up from thirty thousand to forty thousand this year. So, we cannot afford to increase our liability insurance coverage. That being said, we have to do something to protect the town. Uh, if an accident happens, if somebody's parked on the road right of way and there's an accident involving, it's county, it's town property, and the town can be held liable. Therefore, we could send out letters, put along notice, because that's a proactive way that we are, um, handling the issue. Now, that being said, we want to be fair and equitable for everybody and address the issue. This resolution is simply a resolution of the town council of the town of Fort White, Florida, requiring a right of way agreement for any business allowing parking on the town right of ways and providing for an effective date. This resolution simply gives myself and the town attorney the, um, go-ahead to come up with a right of way agreement. And what we foresee that right of way agreement being is an agreement between the business owner and the town allowing parking in the right of way. However, they would have to maintain that right of way, and they would have to provide the county insurance indemnifying the town against liability issues going forward.
And I'll follow up with what you said, Miss Cuddy. When this first started happening, guys, I reached out to, to Lindsay and asked Lindsay, how do you solve this? Because we do have a lot of businesses that they have no parking. I mean, so Lindsay reached out to, um, different attorneys, and they came back with this agreement. Basically, this is what other cities are doing in situations like this. So, they, they do a right of way agreement, and the right of way agreement is signed with the businesses. And then the businesses have to provide their liability insurance for the right of way. And that's the only way. I, I mean, we don't see no other way around it, do you? I mean, I.
No. Especially with what Ms. Connie said about our, our own liability insurance. And of course, one thing that make it go up is if you have claims, um, and the claims don't have any, if, if we have a claim and we don't have a way to subjugate our claim being another insurance policy to go after. So, it's one of those things that's, you know, these businesses exist, um, and a lot of them are, are, are right on our roadways. And so, we could either do nothing and run that risk or, uh, go into the right of way agreements that will provide us with additional, you know, insurance in case of loss. And, you know, again, it's a proactive protective measure for that. And other, that's what, you know, many other municipalities do. So, it's, it's a, it's a way to look at the situation.
The letters were sent out by, at the advice of our insurance people to put everybody on notice to kind of protect the town.
How many feet on each side of the roof?
It, it varies from roof to roof.
Mary's and Fort White's.
Some are twenty-five, some are thirty. It just depends on the roof.
Our pioneers here at Ladies Place out there doing a very good job, I'm telling you.
No.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask a question? Did you ask how much the insurance would go up for the city if, if you allow the parking to take place?
Yes, they would want us to get millions.
They want you to pay millions more?
Not pay. Give a policy for millions.
I, I understand that. But how much would it cost, how much more would it cost the city?
It would cost the city, uh, any amount is too much because we are struggling right now to pay the ten thousand extra that we're having to pay this year. And if it's too big, it'll go up.
What about the residents?
One second.
What about the residents, residents around the city that don't really have?
I meant to ask you that, too.
What's going on?
Their residence is actually parking on the right of way also in their house.
I have the choice.
Yeah.
From the state road. The state road has designated parking along twenty-seven. There are white stripes designated parking along there. And state roads are D O T. That's not Fort, the town of Fort White. If something happens on U S twenty-seven or forty-seven, whatever, that's a D O T issue.
I have a question. Is this only pertaining to businesses or is it pertaining to all of the right of ways in the city?
We just said residents outside.
Well, no, I, my question is, is like, when you go over to the high school football games on a Friday night, you can't hardly drive down the road of the cemetery without almost hitting somebody because there's not a car parked beside the road. So, I didn't know. Is that gonna be addressed also or is it just?
Yeah. Well, you got, you got D's park also.
Yeah, exactly.
So, you got D's park, you got.
A lot of the program at the elementary school, when they have like a program for the kids. I mean, they don't have parking anywhere else. They don't have a choice.
Right.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
We own a business here. We're new. Haven't met any of y'all. Um, this parking right here, I guess, is in the, is that in the east end as well?
Which?
Oh, right here.
The long here?
Yeah. Yeah. Is that east end?
No.
Because I can tell you, none of our patients have gotten in a car accident on Colin. None of our patients park on twenty-seven because it's too dangerous. So, why would people's car insurance not cover if there was an accident?
You can answer that.
It isn't. It's a liability issue. It's, it's, I mean, it's, we're talking about.
Well, I mean, we've never had traffic backed up on Colin. So, I feel like it's more of a liability issue at the high school on a Friday night football game than at a business like, like she's talking about.
But you can't pick and choose.
No, that's what I'm saying.
It's gotta be over and home.
Exactly. It should be good for.
Are y'all asking them to be, Fort White to be additionally insured or they gotta carry a whole separate policy?
Additionally.
Additionally insured, don't cost.
Doesn't cost.
Don't cost. Do business, nothing, except for the certificate. If that's what you're getting.
I don't know. It might cost a little. I don't, I don't know.
Just insured. Well, I mean, we say stuff about all the time.
Well, I mean, our, our, speaking of insurance going up, ours just double to liability care.
Yeah. I believe it.
Yeah. And, and guys, it might be something when you check on with your insurance, it might not cost any just to add an additional. I, I don't know. It'd be something that you need to call the hands.
Well, had we known we would not have patient parking, then we would not have picked that location.
Right.
Because I said, the building's been ours businesses for years. The air salon, antique store, insurance.
Guys, we, listen, we understand that. As the town grows and as we are, we're getting flooded with phone calls daily complaining about exactly what's going on. That's the problem here. It's not we were riding around town and all of a sudden seen people parking on the right of way and decided to do this. We are getting phone calls up here of the residents of Fort White complaining about what's going on. So, as a town, we take the measures that should have been taken way back when. Same thing with cemetery thing that we're going, we're crossing now. We're trying to make it across the board correct. And the only way to do that is to put, is to put liability. That's why I reached out to Mr. Landers and asked him, what are you doing in this situation? And, and he sent out an email and got, got the word back. And that's kind of why the direction we're trying. We're not telling y'all, I mean, the board could vote and say, no, you can't park there, period. We're trying to do what we, the best thing we could do to rectify this bad situation that we're in. And the only reason we're here is because it's been brought to our attention. It's been.
And, and what we're doing tonight, proposing tonight, is not to enact anything specific. We're looking at adopting the authority for the town to develop a right of way. Now, that's gonna include us talking about our own risk management, working with other municipalities, looking at and make it as, as easy as, as easy, as cost-effective, et cetera, as possible. This, this doesn't make the town anybody, doesn't do anything, you know? So, a lot of times, and, and, you know, people look at things, I understand you have a business and you're trying, you know, everything costs. We get that. So, the proposal is to create an agreement that is as cost-effective as possible for the residents while providing the additional security for the town and to address the complaints that have come from the people in the town about the parking issue. So, it's a, it's the beginning of the process. We're on the end.
And, and the answer, Ms. Bish, Ms. Bish was asking a question, and, and I agree because I even said the same thing. We have residents parking on the right of way. We have the D square that people just pull up there and park. And we've got the ball fields. We got, so what do we do about those? I don't know what the answer is. I mean, so, but there again, like I said, we're trying, like, like Mr. Anderson said, we're trying to be, trying to find the best resolution. We want the businesses here. We don't, we're not trying to run the businesses off and trying to make stipulations where y'all leave. No, not by no means. We want y'all here. We want to see Fort White grow. But we gotta do it very, you know, cost-effective for everybody and make sure it's done the right way. Fort White was sued, what, uh, ten years ago, twelve years ago? And it was a liability insurance. That's why we've got to make sure that the liability insurance falls where, where we need it to fall. How do we fix the D square and all that? I don't, I don't, I don't know if that would fall under town. So, that is town property, which the right of way is town property. So, how do you? It's a million dollar question. I don't know, man. Huh?
Our, our own, yeah, our own policies will cover our own.
So, we're trying to figure out an easy solution. We don't know what the answer is right now. So, we just need direction tonight. The old, the board wants to move forward with, so I don't know. I don't know. Yes, ma'am?
I'd like to make a suggestion, um, although you all don't count me as a new member of the organization.
Yeah, you said that earlier.
What is your name? Um, if you?
What's your name, ma'am?
Deborah Fellows.
Deborah who?
Fellows.
Fellows, okay.
Fellows. If you just voted and spent fifteen hundred dollars to increase business in the town, but you're saying that there's no parking for the town, isn't that a conflict of interest? I mean, I understand that we have to grow. We've got to grow gracefully and we've got to grow responsibly. But shouldn't we address bringing in people before we bring in people? And why would the businesses and the residents that are already here be, yeah, punished for living here and parking here? I mean, if.
Well, we're not, we're not trying to punish. I just said that in that last statement. So, so to follow that up, it would be like, why are you asking the town to make sure they take on your liability? Why is it our place to take on your liability? That'd be the same thing asking me, why don't you make these people up here responsible for you? And that's not fair to ask. And so, we're trying, we're trying to find a partnership here for our businesses. That's.
Right.
That's, that's both-sided. So, we give a little bit, they give a little bit. We're not saying, hey, we're gonna just put, put it all on you. We're trying to come up with something here to make it easy for everybody. Because we don't want, we don't want to punish the businesses. But we don't want to take all the responsibility either. That's what you just said. You, you want us to accept all the responsibility.
No, it's not what I'm saying at all. I'm saying that there's got to be a mutually beneficial agreement.
That's what we're trying to do. That's what we're trying to do. That's exactly what we're trying to do.
Right, but the business people and the residents are saying that they can't afford another waiver on their insurances. And we've got a problem here in Florida with insurance companies going out. You may say, and I'm not saying you particularly, I'm saying you may say that it's not going to raise the insurance, but there's nothing anymore today that will not raise the insurances. So what is the solution? Do we have to sign, do we sign a law?
That's what we're trying to figure out. We don't know. We don't know what it is. That's why we're trying to give direction to the attorney right now. If we're trying to come up with maybe a right-of-way agreement, and then let's pursue it a little bit more. But something's got to be resolved. Something has got to be resolved.
You can't do something, just like put up a sign that says the city is not liable?
I wish. It don't work no more. I wish, I wish the time for God. It'd be nice if we could. It used to work, but it don't work no more.
And the one where I said, if I could have read the sign.
So, and businesses are coming, guys. Businesses, this town is growing and they are coming. We, nobody on this board here laid out the town and did all this. Now we're just, we're reaping the rewards from it. So now, but we've got to make sure that every residence in this town is protected.
Is there any property that is available for municipal parking?
I mean, you got, well, I mean, you got S and S, you got B and B, you got, I mean, they're from different places, yeah. I mean, that Dollar General we just approved, that's, that's...
And with the C S A or the C R A, you can purchase...
If we could possibly use some of that money to... Once that money starts coming in, we could maybe use it for right-of-way insurance money. Right, but we don't have it coming in yet, so... Yes, sir.
How much do you think that you would have to increase the town's insurance to get something that you would be comfortable with for insurance liability? And then apply that out, that you're all comfortable with, and then have the city residents have a meeting with them and say, look, if we don't have a budget to cover all this, if we do this, it would cost you X amount of dollars more on your taxes to have this done. That might be something to look at. But I don't know what you would consider enough insurance liability to cover something like that.
Well, that's something that's already in the works. Yeah. Potential.
Well, it is. It'll be in future meetings. Yeah. To be continued.
Guys, we don't know what, for all the business owners that's here, we don't know what the solution is right now. I mean, we, I mean, we're trying to figure it out so it's less on y'all, less on everybody. So y'all just bear with us, all I'm saying. I mean, we're trying to figure out what's going to be less, less impact on y'all. But we have to make sure that we protect Fort White, I mean, residents. Not us, but the Fort White residents. That's what we're here to serve. So we got to make sure that, because one lawsuit, it goes against the town. And it could be on your property, it could be on your property. Is it going to happen? I mean, probably not. I don't know. I hope not. I mean, so, but you, but we have to be prepared if it does happen because we do live in a shoe-happy world, okay? So, yes, ma'am?
So short term, will our resident or our customers be towed at this point?
That letter was sent out because of our insurance company, okay?
Okay, so, I'm sorry, that's the end, that's all. But we have to put everybody on notice, okay?
So don't go there and publicize everybody. We heard them, ma'am. I mean, but, well, like I said, we're trying to get a remedy in...
Right.
Yes, ma'am. We're trying to get a remedy. Yes, sir.
No, that was going to be my question. I was going to throw them off.
I'm definitely getting yours. I'm definitely getting yours, Ronnie. I'm coming right after you. Yes, sir, the guy in the back. Yes, sir.
Well, we'll be able to get something that would give us an idea of what we could take to our insurance company and find out what that cost makes.
Yes, if we...
Number of liability insurance.
Yes, if we do the right-of-way agreement, then we'll be able to draft an ordinance for you and you'll have a right-of-way agreement. So, yes, sir. Yes, sir. If it, like I said, we're trying to work on it, so we'll try to figure it out.
That is due tomorrow, so, you know, that'll be a little while.
I mean, proceed as businesses as usual until we, like I said, maybe the next meeting or when Mr. Landers figures out the correct, you know, if he can bring something back to the board that we can all agree on. So, but, no, but, can I have anything else, guys?
Since we're talking about insurance, I was directed to obtain quotes for our insurance to prepare. The only, I've had three different insurance companies tell me that the cheapest way to go is going to be stay with our municipal insurance trust.
Really? That's great.
And that way, what you have told me before as well.
That's great news. Thank you for looking. Yeah.
Last item on the agenda.
Yep. Hey, we have one more to get to, guys.
We don't have a resolution.
Oh, that's right. Last resolution, our two hundred and three dash forty-seven.
You're voting on to move forward with us developing a liability?
Oh, coming up with something, okay, sir.
Okay, one more thing for y'all, but I'm not in agreement with this until we come up with something.
With that now?
With this resolution right here, I'm not in agreement.
It only gives us the opportunity, the direction to formulate a right-of-way agreement, which you would have to approve.
Correct.
Yeah, then they're going to bring it back for the final approval. Then you can, if you have a problem then, you could fussle, you know what I'm saying? If you want, I mean, at that time. So it's not putting it in effect right now. Let's just give them the work on it.
I understand that, but it says right here where the town is at, the town clerk, to develop the right-of-way agreement with the lawyer. That leaves us out of it.
So you have to prove at the end, though.
Yeah, you got to prove.
I understand that, but are we going to have, okay, question for you, Jim. Are we going to have the private owners on this, too? And what we're going to do about the city board and...
I believe all of those questions need to be answered. Yes, sir.
Because right now, just saying, business is...
Yes, well, that's what I was asked to look into, is to get the consent back to it. But I've heard what you guys have said tonight, so I believe, again, if you pass the resolution, it gives us the authority to put together a right-of-way agreement, to lead up to everything. And we just don't know what that looks like.
I got you.
Yeah. And we might have to take on some extra insurance ourselves to cover the extra prices. The business is not, so, yeah, so...
And we need to talk with our risk management.
Right.
And that's what I'm making the comment, is something that we have to do as a joint effort with, you know, two or three different...
Right.
But it's our risk management, insurance, other businesses, think about residents, our own. The schools, I guess there's the school. I haven't checked. But anyway, it's a...
You're talking about taking on a school down there, no parking?
Well, you're not supposed to be parked, but that's our right-of-way. And it comes out to the schools. I mean, where the school stops, they're about the fourth line.
I'm just saying, no parking there.
Oh, no, we're going to make a park where the playground's at. We're going to tear that out and make parking there. Yeah. Yeah. Are you okay with that?
I'm okay with the direction, yeah.
So we have a motion, a motion, so turn, draw, submit into the right-of-way parking, R twenty-three dash zero four seven. One second. Everyone agreeing with right-of-way parking, R twenty-three dash eight four seven, say aye. Aye. I'll oppose, say nay. Aye. Y'all have direction, Mr. Landers?
Last on the agenda, I don't know if y'all remember, but quite a few months ago, we had talked about replacing the green sand, if you will, at the water treatment plant with a new substance called catalogs.
Uh huh.
It has been brought to, I asked Stacy to come tonight and explain this to me out of prior commitment. The catalogs was misrepresented, basically, to the county utility authority, or the county utility system, that it would cure the tannins and the disinfectant byproducts in the town of Fort White's water. We voted to spend this money to buy this green sand to have it installed into the system. After doing research, Stacy did with the Otter Creek and with Cross Creek, I believe it is, Otter Creek used the catalogs, it did not solve the problem. Cross Creek used ammonia, I believe it is, and it did solve the problem.
It did?
Yes. Problem being, the ammonia is a lot more expensive. The catalogs we spent twenty thousand dollars on. The ammonia cost is going to be in the neighborhood of fifty-five thousand dollars.
Well, what do we, but we don't run water.
I understand. What they're requesting is, they're requesting that we allow them to utilize our AARP money, A A R P, or American Rescue Plan money, to purchase the ammonia and to have it installed in the Fort White water system.
Absolutely not.
They're going to give the credit back for the twenty thousand that has already been spent for it.
We need the fifty thousand dollars for Jordan Street payment. That's what they're trying to do. Tell them, unless the board gives, I'm in total disagreement with that, guys. We've already been fussing with them about the fifty thousand dollars for several months now because we were trying to, the overpayment for the Jordan Street. Now, they're trying to find ways to take that money, is what they're doing. So, no, I'm totally not in agreement. I say use that fifty thousand dollars for Jordan Street, and we don't run that water plant. That's why we don't run the water plant now.
That's right.
So they run the water plant now, not us. And we want to get back in the water business and we need to take it back over, and then we'll worry about them things then. But, I mean, we're talking about something that I don't even, unless y'all disagree with it?
I don't see why we should pay for something they're getting all the money out of. They're the one getting money.
Yes.
Unless they can give me something different.
Yep. Yeah, I agree with you a hundred percent. I don't agree with that at all. Not at all. Is that it, Ms. Connie?
That's it.
Can I have a motion in term? Make a motion to a governor. All in favor, say aye. Thank y'all, guys, for coming.
See you next time.
I would say...
I'm going to tell you. We have to tell you. Check the five oh.
Yeah, I'll send you some, and then we can...
Thank you, guys. Yeah, man.
You can mention, yeah?
I wish, but...
Did you go?
Yeah.
That's not good.
Oh, yeah.
I was just talking on there. Why don't you share that big picture with Lindsey? Y'all be sharing pictures. My family friends, they...
That is?
Yeah. Because of the hurricane, yeah. I know where the... Ten. So I took, uh, I'm a sheriff, a secretary, my wife. I bet you're making a little bit of a change. Oh, yeah. I really... Oh, yeah. They ain't, they ain't know, you know, they're wrong. Yeah. So... Maybe it's a family, but... Oh, yeah. Fellow, the sheriff of Gilchrist County.
Who is the sheriff?
Gilchrist, yeah. He's a good guy. He's a good guy.
You're going to share honor?
Yeah. I thought it was... He's a new fan.
Oh, boy.
See, he, when I was in... I win. He said he's got, oh, the little man. I said, man, man. He was sitting out there. We got a little off station. I tell you, he's holding back a little bit. He was kind of, he was kind of hard to read, kind of like, didn't want to say the wrong thing. And I said, I said, some more. He ain't talking about me. He said, you ain't got to play devil's mule. He said, I'm a private sunshine, I'll be out there behind the, my car. I said, you ain't never been down here. I said, I said, I seen you, I mean, I said, the only thing you ever seen me at is your town. Was when General Bradley came into town, we threw their little pitch right here at the town. Pete Richardson's bar. He said, I'm really, I said, I didn't see you there. Oh, thank you, man. I seen you. He said, that's all I've been to. I said, that's all I've been to. Oh, okay. So then you got to open it up. Yeah. I think he thought I was like... Yeah. I don't know. I don't know. I mean, you know, that's... Later on, I'm not. So, yeah. Have you looked at that? Just four weeks ago. Yeah. She hasn't been a bigger than mine. I like that motherfucker about four hours, man, that's... Just really gave them this way. Man, I appreciate that, that's the other one, the spread. Oh, yeah. Too bad.